Welcome to RPTV. Today, our reporter Gabriel Meisner sits down with Toronto Centre councillor Chris Moyes to discuss some of the most pressing issues facing our communities. Councillor Moyes recently held a series of community town halls to connect with residents in Region Park, St. Jamestown and Moss Park, and we're eager to learn about the tangible results and actions stemming from these events. We'll explore what's next for community safety, affordable housing and city services in the wake of these discussions. Gabriel also dives into other critical topics, from the transition of former Allen Gardens encampment residents to stable housing, to the future of harm reduction sites in the face of provincial cuts, and the debate surrounding Yonge and Dundas Squares renaming to San Kofa Square. Now let's dive into the video.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Meisner and you are watching RPTV News. Today, we are joined with Chris Moyes in his office.
It's great to be here.
In your office.
In my office. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So councillor Moyes, your recent series of community town halls aim to connect with residents across Toronto Centre neighbourhoods such as Region Park, St. Jamestown and Moss Park. While these events provide an opportunity for community input, many residents remain concerned about the tangible outcomes of these discussions. And you share specific actions or initiatives that have resulted directly from these town halls? And how feedback from this year's sessions will influence decision-making on key issues such as housing, public safety and community services?
Well, thank you for the question. Really, the purpose of the town hall was to actually provide feedback to the community. I mean, this is a very busy office of many moving parts. It's the busiest ward in the city of Toronto, and our staff are working flat out, provide services to the local residents. So really, it's an opportunity for me to actually just keep them up to date. As some of the tangible things that are happening. For example, you know, a series of streetlights going up in the ward, some of it due to tragic accidents happened at Queen and Sackville, for example. Crosswalks going up, speed bumps and even murals on our streets. But one of the key things though that I wanted to update the community about was the Downtown East Action Plan. So the Downtown East Action Plan is a pilot project that started back in 2019. It was really to actually address some of the issues in the ward specifically, around the cleanliness, needles and so forth, right? Just the cleanliness of the ward. Because of COVID, a lot of our staff had redeployed to other parts of the city, more specifically around the shelter hotels. So the Downtown East Action Plan didn't work as it was supposed to. But we did have extensive public consultation around the reset, prior to the reset.
Wait, can you repeat why it didn't work, the Downtown East Action Plan?
Well, a lot of our city staff were redeployed to the shelter hotels, right? During COVID. So we had limited resources in the city when it comes to providing tangible services to people.
I see.
Right? For cleaning the streets and those sort of things.
Right.
But we had four public consultations over the last year. And some of the things that we heard was that we wanted the streets to be cleaned. We need to remove graffiti. We wanted support for broken windows for small businesses. So all those things were taken into the reset and we are now going to implement it. So we actually have almost doubled the budget for the Downtown East Action Plan. And so it's unique to Toronto Centre. No other city ward has this. And so we also purchased, for example, a human excrement machine.
A human excrement machine?
To remove feces from public and private spaces. It's a 20 for our service. We'll have dedicated teams to go out and clean the parks three to four times a day in hotspots and in alleyways and laneways, all those things. We also have a committed staff to manage this Downtown East Action Plan. There's two full-time staff and one manager. And I'm also working on 311 in that if a resident has an issue of concern around, again, needle pickup or fecal pickup or whatever the case may be, graffiti removal, they just call 311. It's a one-stop shop. And they will actually provide, ignite the service and have it remedied.
I've seen ads for the 311. You know, call 911, call 311?
Yes. And we've also revamped the 311 service. We're doing a total 180 in revamping it. There's been hiccups in 311. And so we've actually invested quite a bit of funds to actually upgrade the service and make sure it works, it's working the way it's supposed to. So there's a lot of great things happening in the city. We're investing a lot of resources, you know, in community. And the public isn't always paying attention. We only hear things from people when things don't work. But I think, you know, majority of people, when I speak to them and inform them of things that are happening in the ward and across the city, they're like, oh, yes, you know, I have seen this and now that you've mentioned it, you know, I have seen the results of that service, right? So, and again, back to the town halls. It's really just to keep people in the loop. And it's one of many ways that I try to do that. I have my newsletter, you know, we have our website and of course, other means of communicating with the public. So, and another thing that's really important too is my consented office, which we've never had one before in the ward. And it's located centrally in the ward, you know, and people can go to it and inquire or ask for help or service. And I have to say to you that we get hundreds of people coming into the consented office every month. So, I mean, coming to City Hall, as you know, to get to me was quite cumbersome. You have to go through securities, a metal detector. And even then too, to get into a council offices, you know, there is a reception as well. You have to be escorted in. So if there is a barrier here to access the councillor and the councillor's staff. And this is why I think it's really important that the consented office, you know, is a one-stop shop or, you know, like you can make an appointment or you can go knock on our door and there's someone there to provide service to you. So I'm really happy with that specifically.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll ask you my next question. Following the Allen Gardens encampment clearings, can you update us on how the 433 people connected to shelters are transitioning to stable housing? And also, what is the city's stance on the remaining TPs in Sacred Fire? Will they be allowed to stay as part of the Indigenous cultural practices?
So when I first took office two years ago, there was over 89 encampments at Allen Gardens. It was the largest in the city of Toronto. And, I mean, with intention from the very beginning, made sure that, you know, we use the housing-first approach. One of the things that I did was create a task force of senior staff here at the city to actually help the people in the park. There's no sense for me to actually just remove people from a park and then they have nowhere to go. So we've used the Dufferin Grove model as to housing-first approach. So one of the first things I did was I brought a trailer into the park so that our housing staff has a place to actually work out of Monday to Friday night to five. We've also had security there, 24-hour security and other services there. The park's been cleaned several times a day, every day.
What is the Dufferin Grove model?
Well, Dufferin Grove model is really connecting people from the park to housing. So as you've mentioned, you know, we've actually referred 433 people into indoor spaces. And we've permanently housed 98 people out of the park, right? So there's been a lot of great success to that approach. And so I'm also too regarding the Sacred Fire. We're working with the Indigenous office and the Indigenous community to figure out what it is they want, right? I think it's important to work with them and find out what their needs are. And we will try to work with them. Again, using a colonial model that we're in doesn't work for the Indigenous people. It's their land, it's their space, and we need to support them where they're at. And I am providing them with the tools that they need to meet their needs. And that's my intention. And they can stay in the park for as long as they need to. It's important to note though that the Sacred Fire itself, you know, for every child that was discovered through an unmarked grave in a residential school, I believe the Sacred Fire burns seven days for every child. So it's very symbolic and has deep meaning for the community. And it's important to respect their culture and their way of life and the way they grieve and all those things that come with it.
Yeah. Now, you said that 98 people have been housed. So with the remaining 335 people, what's the progress for them?
Well, as I've mentioned, 433 were referred to indoor spaces. That could be a shelter, right? But 98 were, had the opportunity to have permanent housing. With a key, an apartment, a fridge, a bed, right? That's really important. And just last week, we actually opened up 65 Dundas Street East, which is the old Bond Place Hotel. And there's 280 beds in that space with wraparound services, right?
That's right.
Yeah, we were highly criticised for buying a hotel in downtown core Toronto. But it's important to serve people where they're at, all right? And people live here.
Yeah.
And so we have to create spaces for them. If we don't and we move them, let's say, you know, in the periphery of the city, then they'll just come back down here anyway. People tend to stay where they have the supports, be it their friends, their doctors, you know, all those things. And so we need to make space for people in the ward and also space across the city as well. Historically, 62% of social services have been here in Toronto Centre. And people come down here as a result of that. But if you create spaces, you know, in the Scarborough, Tobico and North York, people will stay, you know, close to home, right? And so one of the important things that has happened in the last few years is that when it comes to creating housing and supportive housing and shelter spaces, that responsibility has been delegated to staff. It's no longer in the hands of the councillor. This is why previously, you know, councillors could actually veto where those services were. And as a result, they've been clustered in the downtown core like Toronto Centre. So when I got here two years ago, I've said from day one that we need to spread the wealth a little bit and make sure that the services across the city, not just in the core of the city.
I didn't understand what you just said about how councillors could veto a decision. Can you explain that?
Well, previously, a councillor can say, I don't want a shelter in my ward. Or they don't want a supportive housing unit in their wards, right? So then staff then couldn't actually create those spaces. But since 2018, when council was reduced from 44 to 25, councillors cannot do everything, right? There's just, the city is massive. There's a lot of responsibilities, a lot of things going on and moving parts.
Right.
And so we had to delegate some things to staff.
I see.
And housing was one of those things.
Wow. So now staff gets to decide if there's going to be a shelter or a half-house?
Exactly, yes.
Those types of services in the board?
Yep, that's correct. And it's not to say that, you know, Toronto Centre will not have any more because we have had some more social services and programming in the ward itself. But, because there's a need for it still, right? But I think it's important to create more spaces within the downtown as well. And I also sit under the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Sorry, the Federation of?
The Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So that is city councillors and mayors from across the country that come together and talk about some common issues and using perhaps a national approach to it. For example, the Prime Minister comes, the leaders of the opposition come. And so we all speak in one voice when it comes to some of the things that are affecting our communities. And there are trends across the country. And housing is one of them, addictions another. So when we come together and speak with one voice and say to the Prime Minister and others, well, this is an issue right across the country and we speak to the premiers as well, there's more power in that one voice. So we talk about those things, right?
And what can that bring about?
Well, more funding, you know, more housing supports, all those things.
Do you think a lot of this is just a matter of funding? There's a lack of funding, there's too much funding in other things? Or is there other things?
Well, I mean, again, it's not only funding, but funding is a big part of it, of course, right? But also to being given opportunity to create certain initiatives, right? For example, land, you know, work with the federal government to provide, get some land and maybe providing co-op housing for some. Because when co-op housing, you know, when it first started back in the 70s, it was funded by the federal government. And Toronto Centre actually has more co-op housing per capita than anybody else in the country, right? If you look along the Espinade and those places, there's all co-op housing. So, and that's a way of keeping housing prices low, right? So, but again, those are things that have worked in the past and it can work still in the future. As well as, you know, building more TCAC stock, for example, right? You know, we're the largest landlord, you know, in the country through TCAC and we continue to build stock. But yet there's still a large waitlist and a large need for housing across the city as well. So we need as many different strategies as possible to address the crisis that we're in now.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to ask you my third question. With the provincial government's plan to close harm reduction sites, how do you foresee the impact on Toronto Centre's overdose crisis and mental health challenges? What step is the city taking to ensure access to life-saving services like safe consumption sites and supportive housing, given the alarming rates of opioid-related deaths in our communities?
So as Chair of Public Health, you know, it's front and centre for me. And prior to being elected official, I was an addictions councillor at St. Michael's Hospital in the ward as well for 22 years. So this issue is close and dear to my heart and...
You've been a lot of things. Sorry. You were a police officer, you were a teacher, I believe?
No, I was a schoolboy trustee.
Schoolboy trustee.
For almost seven years.
Okay, you've done a lot.
I've done a lot and still, there's still so much more to do.
Yeah.
But...
Sorry, sorry. Keep going with what you were saying.
It's okay. But so, I know some of the people in the streets personally because of the work I used to do, you know, at the hospital. And I know their stories. Not everyone was born an addict. Something happened in their lives that got them to this point. And it's important to know that they are our neighbours. They can be your sibling, a parent, you know? And so you have to humanise the people that are at risk and most marginalised. And I think it's incumbent upon us to support those who are most marginalised in our communities. You know, big children, seniors and those who have fallen through the cracks. And safe consumption sites is important because we meet people where they're at, right? People are at different stages of their recovery. And so it's important to engage them and find out where, you know, they are at and help them where they're at. Some people may, I know through my own experience of working in the field, many people try to get off the drugs that they're on, but they stumble along the way and they come back 100 times. And you know what? You open your arms to them every time that they come back, right? You have to realise addictions is an illness and it's a healthcare issue and you have to treat it as such. I know when I started in the field many years ago, we didn't really have harm reduction and safe consumption sites. So I remember people coming into the emergency and stealing syringes off the carts and sharing a one needle among themselves. And we also know that HIV rates went through the roof, Hep C rates went through the roof. And it took a long time to actually, to educate the users as to why they should not be sharing needles. And here we are, fast forward in 2024, almost 2025, and we're now saying to people, well, you know what? All the things that we've told you to do, you know, the street out the window. So we're doing a disservice to our community. And it's also important to note that harm reduction sites were strategically placed where they are because the need was greatest, right? It was addressing a need that was there. And through the safe consumption sites, they actually keep a lot of needles off the street. There's a trust factor involved with the staff and the clients. And also too, they prevent a lot of overdose deaths, overdose deaths, right? If they were not providing that need, then all those overdoses would be on the street and our emergency services would have to go and, you know, try to reverse those overdoses.
Exactly.
But also too, there'd be a lot more needles on the street. You find the needles in our parks, in our laneway or alleyways and even in our school grounds. So people are concerned that there are more, there are needles on the streets now. There will be a lot more needles on the street if this policy goes through. And it's also important to note too, and I hope it doesn't go through, but if the safe consumption sites closes, it's also important for us as Toronto Centre residents that the Downtown East Action Plan works and works well.
Yeah.
Because then the crews that, that will be on the ground will be the ones picking up the needles, you know, in those spaces that I just mentioned.
But they're not going to be the ones dealing with overdoses?
They are not. And, you know, we've had a lot of criticisms from the unions, the paramedic unions, in that in some cases, you know, there's been zero paramedics available in some cases over the year. And I'm going to say to you that if safe consumption sites close, it's going to get a lot worse. Because when someone calls for life-saving measures like overdose, it's just not the paramedics that's called. The police attends, the fire attends and the paramedics attend. Whoever gets there first, they have the tools to actually reverse an overdose. So it's a matter of time. So you have three different city services going to help one person.
Right.
And if they're there helping one person, then they're not helping someone else that may also need the help, like someone have a heart attack or a stroke, right? So again, I think this government's very short-sighted as to the harm they're causing only to those that are in need of overdosing, but just the general public, right? Let's mention the strain on our hospital emergencies. And our city services. I feel that it's also a form of download because the province tend to actually stop providing certain services and the city has to pick up the slack.
Right.
I mean, an example of that, for example, is addictions services. People who are in the parks, you know, for example, and the street encampments. A lot of those people suffer from addictions and mental health. And both of those things are healthcare. And healthcare is a provincial responsibility. So when the province doesn't come forth and provide the service, everyone looks at the city like, what are you doing? So then, you know, we then have to act. And we do so, right? Because these are our citizens and we want to make sure that, you know, we care for everyone.
So let's say this does get passed, what do you think the city will do?
I mean, the city will continue to do what it always does, right? Try and help its citizens, right? I mean, this winter month, for example, I mean, we very started looking at opening up warming centres, opening the inner care centre. We house about 12,000 people every night in the shelter system, right? You know, and that still isn't enough. So, and people, and because we're so accessible, people are always saying to us as a city, you know, please do more, right? But another issue is that we do create more spaces and we do create more spaces every year. But it's also important that other municipalities create spaces too. Because when they don't or they're slow to act, people are going to move where, you know, they can get the help, right? Another issue that we're having right now is that we receive 500 refugees a month in the city of Toronto. And 53% of those refugees are in our shelter system. So which means that there's a bottleneck in the system. So people that are in the parks don't have a space in the shelter system. And legally as a city, through provincial courts and our own regulations, through our ombudsman and our own encampment strategy, we cannot actually remove someone from a park or public space unless we have somewhere indoors to move them to. So you'll see that, you know, in Moss Park, in St. James Park, in Trinity Square just behind us, there's over 20-plus people in each of those spaces. So we have three of the four largest encampments right now in the city. But we have nowhere to put them and so they are where they are right now. So I understand the frustrations of the community. I'm frustrated too, but we're doing all we can with the means that we have. I mean, the city itself, Toronto spends $1.7 billion a year on housing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one of our largest budget lines. And if things continue the way that they are currently, it'll be up to $2 billion in the next, let's say, five years or so. So, you know, it's tough, it's tough. And I don't have all the answers and we're constantly trying to navigate and try to figure things out ourselves.
All right, I'm going to ask you my next question. During the October 30th community consultation on Region Park Phases Four and Five, residents raised concerns about maintaining affordable housing amidst plans to add more market units. With a commitment to 633 RGI units, rent gear to income units, what actions will you take to ensure the project prioritises more social housing units?
Well, first of all, you, all the RGI units in Region Park are status quo. So there'll be no loss of RGI units in Region Park. We've also added 682 more affordable units to the Phases Four and Five. It's not RGI, but it's affordable units, right? It's important to note also though that it's the market units that help subsidise the affordable units, right? So you have to sell the market units first.
Right.
Then, you know, we get... Then, you know, we get the funds because TC, the city owns the land.
Right.
And it's a partnership with Tridel. And so once we get that money, we can actually use it to build more affordable units. So...
And when you say affordable units, do you mean affordable housing or social housing?
Affordable housing.
Affordable.
Which is TCAC units.
Right.
Right? But again, it's important to note though, a lot of people ask for rent gear to income units. But it costs eight thousand dollars a year per unit. And it should be the province and the Fed to pay for the RGI units, not the city. We want to build more housing, right? It's either, you know, we take that money and build less and provide RGI or take that eight thousand dollars and build more housing.
Right.
And I think, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're able to actually build more as well, right? So we're really trying to be creative. Again, we're in a housing crisis. And, you know, we are advantageous in that the land is ours. So let's build up and get people housed.
So I'm a little hazy with the facts. But there was a commitment for fifty-fifty, fifty percent social housing, fifty percent market housing. Am I correct?
Well, that... I'm not sure about that, to be honest. What I am aware of though is that we would build more affordable units, which we've been committed to. We've committed to not decreasing RGI units. And we've committed to building as much affordable housing as we can. And like I've said in the two years I've been here, one of the things I was able to do is to actually increase affordable units to six hundred and about eighty-two units, if my mind's certainly correctly. It's been a couple of years since I looked at the numbers. But, but yeah, that's been my commitment, right? And I, you know, we've been on track. I think, you know, we've had a few hiccups. Last month, when we were doing a survey, we found out that there is a Toronto Water slash sewage facility below Phases Four and Five.
Right, the sewage vortex.
Yes. That, that comes all the way from Young and Eggnitton, you know, and comes right down to our ward and beyond. So it's a very important infrastructure. And so we had to work with Toronto Water and our two W City Managers, TCAC and Tridel, to help mitigate that. And this is why we also had to make some adjustments to the buildings itself.
But so that, that added, I think, ninety-eight or ninety-two, one of those...
Ninety-eight, I believe.
Ninety-eight new market condos. But if the market condos are the ones offsetting the price for the social housing, then why couldn't they have added ninety-eight more social housing?
Well, again, because of the cost of the infrastructure and the removal and navigating things, right? It's just increased the cost of the, of the project.
I see, I see.
So, yeah, I'm not a engineer. But, you know, based on the layperson information that was given, you know, we want, it's an important project and we wanted to make sure that it proceeded on time.
With the renaming of Young Dundas Square to St Kofa Square, this has sparked strong reactions and debate. Can you provide an update on this issue and how the city is addressing community concerns and misinformation about the cost and significance of the name change?
Well, I have to say to you that, first of all, St Kofa means to go back pre-slavery and move forward together in a good way together. That's what it means, St Kofa, it's a unifying word.
So that word means that whole thing, about going back before slavery to now?
Reclaiming your, your heritage, your true heritage and moving forward in a good way together, right? That's all, that's all it means.
But it's, it's a nice word.
It's a nice word. And it's also important to note that there was a renaming advisory committee that sat for two years prior. And the people that sat on there, I think there were twenty-four people on there. And they, they consisted of black leaders and scholars, indigenous elders and, and keepers. And so the indigenous elders and scholars stated that because black people were harmed by Henry Dundas, they will actually take a step back and give the black community space to choose a name of their choosing. And so one of the, so there were two co-chairs on the renaming committee. One of them was Dr Newton, a tenured professor at U of T, who, whose specialty is the transatlantic slave trade and slavery specific to Dundas and the harm that it's caused, you know, over time. So she is well-respected and, you know, in her field. And another, the other co-chair was an indigenous elder. So they brought forth four names initially and then they eventually chose one name, which was St Kofa. The other three was actually names of people. But they didn't want to choose a name of a person because you don't know what will come up, right? Someone will always find something, you know, that will discredit the individual. So they chose a phrase instead. And of course, the intention was to actually rename Dundas Street. But there was a, the cost was just too high for the city. So the mayor and council decided that they would just rename four city assets. So Dundas Station and Dundas West, former Young Dundas Square and the Jane Dundas Library. So the library is changes nima ready. The square is actually now St Kofa Square. We're just figuring out the design and the refresh of the square. The cost of the square, of the, of the name change is, is minimal, really. It's about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars probably in the range. But, and anything above and beyond that will come from donors and other means. And also too, the cost of the renaming itself is not coming from the tax base, it's coming from Section Thirty-Seven's, which was actually set aside almost twenty years ago by my predecessor Kyle Ray to refresh the square. That's where the money's coming from. But also too, the square has not a refresh since its inception. For example, there's very few ballards there. If someone decides to drive onto the square while people are there, you know, it could cause a lot of harm to people. During the last, I think, two weeks ago, there was an incident in the square where someone drove up on the square and they were, you know, doing fireworks, right, in a car. So again, it's just one example that, you know, we need to prevent such things from happening. And I think it's important to just add some colour to the square. So we had, we hired a, the board, the St Kofa Square Board hired a firm, a consulting firm to help with the public consultation and providing a refresh for the square itself. So it's an exciting time. I think it's a positive initiative.
I think so too.
And, you know, TMU has been very supportive. Calhoun Fairview has been supportive, you know, the Downtown Young BI has been very supportive. And many people in our community have been supportive, right? I mean, I don't want you to walk away thinking that majority of Torontonians are against the renaming.
Right.
And I think too, there needs to be an education piece, and there will be an education piece around what St Kofa actually means. Because a lot of people have some misconception as to what it actually is, right? So like all things, people will adapt. I mean, we've changed the Skydome to Rogers Centre. We've changed the Air Canada Centre to whatever it's called now, Scotiabank Arena. We're always changing things in the city, right? We actually changed Centennial Park to Rob Ford Park. We're always changing things in the city. But I, I mean, I, I hate to say it, but because the square perhaps highlights maybe the black community, people don't like that. But black people have been here in this city for generations and they've helped build this city and make it a wonderful place to live and to work and to raise a family. And I think, you know, just giving a little bit of recognition should not be such a hard thing to do.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I agree.